Public hearings. We have a public hearing tonight. We're going to hold a public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce three ordinances to implement housing element programs by amending Title 12 Land Use of the San Bruno Municipal Code as follows. One, add Chapter 12.240 to establish a reasonable accommodation process for persons with disabilities. Two, add Chapter 12.250 to establish a density bonus program. And three, amend Section 12.80.445 to add transitional housing and supportive housing as permitted uses within the definition of special residential care facility.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This time, we're wrapping up the current housing element cycle. This housing element cycle runs from 2007 through 2014, and we're actually preparing for the next housing element cycle, which runs from 2014 through 2022. And as we complete this cycle, it's necessary that we look at our housing element and look at our implementation program and section to see if there are items yet to be achieved, yet to be satisfied. And as the staff did this work, we noticed that there are several items, several programs that yet need to be completed. So we've been working internally among staff members and with our planning commission, and there are actually four separate areas of work that we've been working on. One has to do with emergency shelters, and the other three, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned, having to do with reasonable accommodations, density bonus, and transitional and supportive housing. All of these areas are required to be addressed by state law. There is actually adopted state legislation in all of these areas that requires local jurisdictions, like the city of San Bruno, to adopt local ordinances to implement sections in their code to address these matters. Pertaining to emergency shelters, as we brought this subject to the planning commission, and we addressed this in May of this year with the planning commission, there was quite a bit of discussion about where emergency shelters should be located, what's the population of people needing emergency shelters here in San Bruno, what has the impact been pertaining to shelters or housing that has been provided here in San Bruno? And the planning commission decided, after receiving comments from a number of different individuals, to ask that a study session be held to look at the matter of emergency shelters in more depth, and that staff research and collect information and bring it back to the council and commission for consideration for direction on how to go about preparing a draft ordinance to implement the state requirement to provide for emergency shelters here in San Bruno. Pertaining, though, to the other areas, having to do with reasonable accommodations, density bonus, transitional and supportive housing, the draft ordinances that were presented to the planning commission in May and discussed at that meeting in May, the commission felt comfortable moving those forward for consideration by the city council. We brought those ordinances to you, to the city council, at a study session in July of this year, July 8th of this year, and we reviewed those draft ordinances with you. First off, with reasonable accommodations, the concept here with reasonable accommodations is that an individual or individuals with disabilities should have an equal right to housing within the state of California. The state has mandated that local jurisdictions put in place a procedure whereby people with disabilities can require exceptions to zoning and planning laws so that they can enjoy housing as others would enjoy housing in any particular community. The exceptions would be things like allowing for ramps, let's say, in a setback area, to give you a single example. The next area has to do with density bonus, and in the area of density bonus, as we well know, there's a strong concern throughout the state about providing for affordable housing for all segments of the population. One tool to do that, that the state has now mandated that local jurisdictions put in place, is state density bonus law. Essentially, there are several aspects to this provision, and Mark Sullivan, our long-range planner, will talk to you about this ordinance in more detail. But some highlights are, for example, that as a developer proposes a certain number of affordable housing units within a project of a certain category, say, low or very low or moderate, based on the number of units being proposed in a development project, the developer would be entitled, per state mandated density bonus law, a certain number of additional units, up to 35% would be the total maximum, based on affordability. And for senior housing, it's a 20% increase in the number of units. Additionally, besides the density bonus in terms of units for the number of affordable units being provided, there are provisions for concessions, waivers, and incentives, and we'll talk to you more about those in a few minutes. The objective here really is to encourage, provide opportunities for more affordable housing within our communities, while at the same time allowing for local communities to look at local concerns and issues and to try to address those. So it's a balancing act. So there's a state mandate here, and I think in terms of drafting this ordinance, what we've tried to do, and Mark will go into more detail about this, and we'll be happy to talk to you more about this as we move forward, we've tried to balance the state mandate as well as local interests and how we're proposing this ordinance be put in place. So that's a little bit about density bonus at this point. The last item, the third issue that we're actually bringing forward to you tonight, has to do with transitional and supportive housing. And transitional housing has to do with providing housing typically for six months or more, where one is transitioning perhaps from a situation of homelessness to looking for and finding permanent housing within a community. And supportive housing has to do with housing for populations that need support typically. This can be housing for people that have mental health issues, as an example, and this would be housing that would be provided on a more ongoing or permanent basis. And again, there would be a support aspect to it. So we're bringing forward these three ordinances for your consideration with the understanding that the fourth area, emergency shelters, we would be coming back to the city council at a future date at a scheduled study session to talk to you more about and provide you information more about different locations for such housing, looking at our local population, its needs, possible impacts or experiences we've had in the past in terms of working with this population. Why are we doing this? It's state mandated, is why we're doing it. This is a state mandated provision. We have gone through a process with this current housing element where we have an adopted and certified housing element. We've indicated to the State Department of Housing that we would implement this current housing element, and these ordinances are part of the implementation that was understood when we went through the adoption and certification process in 2010. The state is telling us also that as we satisfy the requirements of the current certified housing element by implementing these programs, we're entitled, if we do that, to a more expedited review in terms of this next cycle. Right now, our staff is actually preparing the housing element update as part of a regional effort, working with 21 elements, to bring before you later on this year the proposed housing element for this next cycle, 2014 through 2022. By complying with the state requirements for the current cycle, we would be entitled to an expedited review through housing and community development at the state level for this next housing element, and we would be entitled to an eight-year cycle for this next housing element, all the way out to 2022. And if we don't satisfy the requirements of the current cycle, then we would need to come back in four years, not eight years. So we would have to basically double our effort. That's a bit of background in terms of the housing element process, where we stand now, why we're moving forward with these particular ordinances to kind of bring these requirements into our municipal code. Mr. Sullivan has more information. We'll go through the ordinances in a little bit more detail, and then we'd be happy to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. As David mentioned, adoption of these three ordinances is a requirement of state law and also a requirement for our current housing element to remain in compliance with state housing law. So what I'm going to do is just briefly go through the three ordinances and try to address your comments at the July 8th study session. So the first one is a reasonable accommodation ordinance. Again, this is a mandate by the state, and the purpose of the reasonable accommodation ordinance is to ensure that individuals with disabilities are able to enjoy housing in the same way as any other resident in the community. The ordinance, as written, provides a process to request modifications to zoning requirements to allow access to and more convenient use of housing for a disabled person. Examples include a ramp that encroaches into a setback, lowered railing, and possibly even an elevator shaft. The ordinance, as was written before, authorizes the community development director to review and approve such requests, and the council commented that someone other than the community development director should also be authorized to approve these requests, and we simply modified the ordinance to include the community development director's designee to be able to review and approve requests. So that's how that one was addressed. As to the density bonus law, this is also a state mandated process, which has been in place with some adjustments for 10 years. So developers have had the ability to request density bonuses since, actually, 2004. It's only in this current housing element cycle that cities were required to incorporate the density bonus law into their local municipal codes. The basic density bonus provides a housing project that produces affordable housing, additional units, depending on the amount of affordable units that are in the project. And as David mentioned, it's up to 35% total. For example, a project that includes 5% very low-income units would be allowed a 20% density bonus, so that would be 20% above the original number of units that were proposed. For low-income units, it would be 10%. So it's sort of a sliding scale, depending on the depth of affordability and the number of affordable units. And as David mentioned, the law also provides an across-the-board 20% increase for senior housing, which is included in our local ordinance. The law also allows an applicant to request from one to three concessions or incentives to development standards as needed to contribute to an affordable housing's financial feasibility. So concessions and incentives are pretty much used interchangeably. They're kind of the same thing. So essentially, they're requests for a reduction of development standards, such as setbacks, lot coverage, any local regulation that governs land use and development on property. So as I said, one to three concessions, and the concessions are allowed based on the percentage of affordable units in the project. So it's on a sliding scale. And so that's mandated by state law, and that's included in our ordinance. Currently, the city has very little control over the density bonus process, what is requested or what is approved, and the state does not specify what concessions or incentives an applicant can request. So what we've done in this ordinance, and this is sort of in response to your question the last time about what flexibility the city has in the concessions that it offers. And so the proposed ordinance provides some control over the process. So in fact, an applicant could apply for any concession they want to. That's simply allowed by state law. But what we've done is, in our process, we've identified certain concessions and incentives which we feel would contribute to making a project more feasible and at the same time have a limited impact on community interests and the surrounding community. And that would be a relatively simple process, where a developer would make the request and then, through a simple analysis, justify that request. And these are specified in the ordinance, and they include incentives such as -- let me just get the list here. Okay, there it is. Okay. As reduced parcel sizes or dimensions, building separation requirements, usable open space, floor area ratio, maximum coverage by structures, and deferral until occupancy of development fees. So those would be, as I said, through a simple process, and we feel that a developer would be more likely to just choose one of those because it would be relatively simple. If they were to request any -- all other incentives would require a more involved process, including a detailed pro forma and a lot more information to justify why they need the concession or incentive. I should also mention that an applicant can also request a waiver. I'm just bringing this out there because this is over and above concessions. So a concession is basically to make a project more financially feasible, and if, in the end, a developer feels that the project cannot be built because of physical limitation, they can also request a waiver to a development standard. And just so that you know that there are concessions, incentives, and waivers. In any case, the city council would give the final approval for concessions, incentives, and waivers. So every application for concessions or incentives or waivers would come to the city council. The planning commission could approve density bonuses but not concessions. The city council also commented that there could be unintended consequences contrary to city interests, especially, for example, within the transit corridors plan area. And staff would like to point out that the transit corridors plan standards and guidelines were developed to facilitate financially feasible projects. So we think that there's a very small chance that a density bonus would even be necessary in the transit corridors area because it was a market-based plan that was designed to encourage the type of development, I think, that density bonus projects would be seeking. This is, of course, if the ballot measure is approved, and there would be some changes depending on that. And it should also be noted that compliance with the Transit Corridors Plan residential protection measures would still be a consideration in this process. The city council also expressed a strong interest, or has expressed a strong interest, in providing affordable housing in the community, and at this point, the city has few options to produce affordable housing since the elimination of redevelopment and the Palmer Court decision, which invalidates rental inclusionary housing programs. The density bonus program is one tool to promote affordable housing in the community. So that's our density bonus program. And the last issue is the transitional and supportive housing ordinance, and this again is mandated by state law. And the state law requirement is to remove constraints to transitional and supportive housing by permitting this type of housing by right as a residential use, like any other residence of the same type in the same zoning district. First, I'll define the terms again. For transitional housing, it means rental housing for stays of at least six months, but where the units are recirculated to another recipient for a set period, usually not longer than two years. Transitional housing may be designated for a homeless individual or family transitioning to permanent housing. Supportive housing means housing with no limit on the length of stay that is occupied by the target population, which is defined in the state statute. And it is linked to onsite or offsite services that assist supportive housing residents in retaining the housing, improving his or her health status, maximizing his or her ability to live, and where possible, to work in the community. The target population is defined by state law to mean persons with low incomes who have one or more disabilities, including mental disabilities, AIDS, or other chronic health conditions, or individuals eligible for services provided under the Lanterman Act, which is basically individuals with developmental disabilities. Staff sought to address the city council comments by modifying the definition of special residential care facility to include transitional and supportive housing, which are permitted by right in residential zones. This gives a certain level of control, limiting the number of residents to six or fewer in a project. And the city council was concerned about the ability to require state licensing, and it should be noted that licensing would be required in certain cases, but if the tenants are independent and do not need support services, licensing would not be required, and the city is not in a position to require it. And that concludes my presentation on the three ordinances.
Any questions of staff at this time, before we open the public hearing?
Through the chair?
Michael.
I just wanted to ask on the handout that we received at the beginning of the meeting, can we get a summary of what changes are in this versus what we had in our original packet?
Councilmember, I'd be happy to do that. There's really a single change that you'll find there. In some areas in the density bonus draft ordinance that we're proposing, we had indicated only concessions or only incentives. The two should be named together. So standard throughout, it should be concessions and incentives. Concessions and incentives. So we did a global change through that density bonus to indicate concessions and incentives. That's the only change. Thank you.
Anything else?
Through the chair. I was going to ask the same question because I haven't had an opportunity to go through this. Maybe if we're getting something at this hour, could we have it stand out or something so we can -- our eyes can quickly?
I apologize for that. We should have done that, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public elect to address the city council on this issue? All right, if we close the public hearing, you're precluded from talking about this to us after. Motion to close?
So move.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion or action by the council?
The density bonuses, that's offered to predominantly new construction, new developments?
Yes.
And so then, the other two ordinances, the ones on -- come on, remind me. On the reasonable accommodations and then the transitional housing. Are there any incentives for, any state incentives or funding for providers to provide that type of, I guess, structure or accommodations for the community? We know that there are tax credits and some state fundings available for affordable housing for new developments, but what is the incentive to, say, for instance, a multi-residential owner in an existing building to want to provide low-income housing to an existing building, to get funding or something and maybe some incentives? Do they exist?
Yes, they do. There were funds through a bond measure that are slowly being depleted, but it was a very large sum of money, and a certain amount of it was dedicated to supportive housing, emergency shelter, persons with disabilities. So periodically, that funding becomes available, and there's a new source of affordable housing funds that's apparently coming through the state right now, being considered. And my understanding is that there will be funding available for this type of housing.
Because what I'm getting at, and I realize that there's a shortage of housing for different types of members of our community, whether they be elderly, whether they be intellectually disabled, or even physically disabled. There's programs where, and there's a demand to have adult care in residential areas, and people pay a lot of money to take advantage of that. If there's no incentive to provide transitional housing, if there's no incentive to provide housing for physically disabled, then where is the state going with these mandates, or what do they expect?
Yeah, just briefly, I think a lot of this is part of the sort of anti-discrimination laws, is to treat this type of housing just like any other housing. There have been some problems in some communities, so that's the purpose, I think, fundamentally. But what you're talking about, it's how do you produce more of it? How do you accommodate those populations?
Okay. Any questions, discussion, or action by the council?
Through the chair. I have a question. So the concessions, you said that the builder, the developer, would have the option of requesting these, and then they would still come to the council for approval. And I'm wondering, the way things are today, a developer could ask for exceptions from whatever guidelines we have. I think people do that now. If they want to do something different, if they want to exceed limits that we have, they can make that request, and they will go through the planning commission, and they can appeal that and bring it to us. So what is really different about what are we changing? Do they have any additional rights? Is there a higher burden on us to deny or approve that?
Councilmember, there is a higher burden on us. I think that you're describing where people may ask for a variance to a development standard today, outside of this density bonus ordinance that we're discussing this evening. And so that's a different process. There are findings for a variance, for deviation from a development standard, like a setback, for example. In this case, with the incentives and concessions, the idea is that they are linked really to providing for affordable housing units. They're essentially an opportunity or reward for individuals who are willing to include affordable housing units within their development projects. And so that's a major difference. And so with that, though, they still need to demonstrate that, as Mr. Sullivan indicated, that these concessions and incentives are needed, necessary, to make the project affordable. So that's a key burden for them with respect to this process. But in a sense, it's an incentive, it's a reward for them, providing affordable housing units within our community, and a tool to obtain, hopefully, more affordable housing units here in San Bruno and across the state. So I don't know if I read this correctly, but it appears that it said somewhere in here that they are not required to provide any sort of financial proof of what they're claiming is required to make the project profitable for them. So are we just going to take their word if they say, we have some guidelines in place now that say, okay, this should be a profitable project within these parameters?
in place now that say, okay, this should be a profitable project within these parameters? They can come in and say, well, no, we really need to build more, we need to expand more, we need to add more units to make it, to make what we think is profitable, or what they think is profitable. So do we need to just accept whatever they tell us?
No, not necessarily at all. In fact, the way the ordinance is set up was to try to direct the applicants, the prospective developers, to concessions and incentives that would seem more in keeping with the policies and development objectives of San Bruno, and that the test was lower in those cases. And where they would deviate into areas where we would have more concern in terms of community impacts, they would need to demonstrate at a higher level with more detailed analysis and pro forma information that indeed that particular request is necessary. So the way we drafted this was to try to really guide applicants to those incentives or concessions that seem more in keeping or less of a concern in terms of community objectives.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Irene?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you for how responsive you were to all our comments. It wasn't easy, I'm sure. There's a lot of detail in this. And let me just make the statement, and you tell me if I'm right or wrong. So if we don't approve this or some variation of what you've presented to us, the state, what the state has dictated is like the default position of whatever we're doing. So what you've have here is really more accommodating to our own community and to our community concerns and the concerns that you heard from the council from the last time we had a study session on this. Is that?
That's extremely accurate.
Oh, good. I go for that.
No, it really is because the default, for example, if we don't adopt this, an applicant, a developer, could come in and basically claim state law in any case. And so what we've tried to do, based on your comments in all three areas, actually, is to try to hone, guide applications to be more in keeping with local community interests.
Okay. And I read this two or three times, and the more I read it, the more I realized that was what you were doing, and that you provided quite a few safeguards for developers not coming in and saying, well, we're just going to do this, and we don't really care what you guys say or do. So I appreciate that. And the other piece is, when it reaches a certain level, it, okay, right now, it goes to the planning commission, things go to the planning commission. If the planning commission approves it or doesn't approve it, it kind of, that's where it goes unless somebody appeals something. This has the safeguards that when it reaches a certain level, it automatically goes to the city council. It's not something that there's an appeal about or whatever, it just automatically goes there. So I appreciate that part in there as well. So having said all those things, I really can't think of any way to improve this, so there you are.
Any comments or questions or action by the council? Mark, do we have to do these separately?
Yes, I would, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Action by the council?
Oh, I'll introduce the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I will wave the first reading, or move to wave the first reading.
Okay, there's second.
Second.
So motion is second to wave the first reading. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now I'll introduce the resolution.
There's three.
Three. You want to, can I do them all three?
No.
Okay, I will introduce the first, which is the, sorry about that.
Density bonus.
The ordinance of the city to implement adopted policies of the housing element for reasonable accommodations.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And then the ordinance for the density bonus.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And last but not least, is the ordinance, thank you, for land use for transitional and supportive housing.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.